That spends, you know, three thousand dollars and more for a student?
Or more.
Or more. Oh, boy. Excuse me.
Right there. Well, you've got power. Can I see a charge?
All right. Got nuts. There was just no way to gracefully do that.
No.
Hi, how are you? Yeah. That's half the battle. How are you, Sue?
All right, could we come to order, please? If we could stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call. We have everybody here, which is great. Could I get an approval of the agenda?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Communication section is open period for patron comments. We have one person who signed up, Terry Hildebrandt.
Or afterward.
What's that?
Or after, I think.
Uh, hold on a sec. Did I get this wrong?
Yeah, after the second.
Okay, I'm sorry, Terry. All right. My mistake. Standing committee reports. Did anyone have any committees?
Oh, I did not.
I didn't. We had Finance Committee.
Oh, then we want to do that, uh, the advocacy committee.
Okay. Do you want to give an update on that, or?
You want to go first?
After you.
Okay, you talk me into it. We held our first meeting of the advocacy committee tonight, kind of a working session. And really what we looked at was what our references are, what we can use to look at the bills in the state of Missouri. And we know what the links are to the Senate and the House. And we have the reference documents from MSBA to kind of guide us after we figure out what we want. But I think the two main things that we're looking at is trying to decide when we look at a bill, one of the factors, one of the buzzwords, for lack of a better word, that you look at in the text of a bill that says, "We need to think about this and see what the impact is on the school district." So, we all kind of share what our kind of our perspectives are. And our homework assignment is for each of us to write down five or six things that we think are the most significant things in a bill to get our attention, so we can... We think it's important that as a district, we have kind of a general idea of what we're looking at. You know, what affects us and what impacts us. After we've done that, then we also want to try and take a look at, are some of these more important than others? You know, if we see something, and for the sake of argument, if we see something that talks about budget or revenue, that may be more important than, say, something else we see. So, we're going to, you know, put that in our comments of which ones we think have the most importance or most weight. The two action items, we're going to, we will meet again before the meeting on the 18th. We'll probably have it up in the conference room, so we don't get in, you know, get in everybody's way as they're getting set up for the meeting. And also, I want to, I want to go ahead and make contact with whoever in the central office is going to be working on the district-wide committee and start working to see who'd like to do that. Our hope is when we, after we've had our April meeting, we'll have a chance to sit down and share what we know with the district committee to start working. And I'll give you two reasons that we need to do this. Senate Bill 55 and House Bill 349, which passed today by one vote. Eighty-two people voted for it, so now that will go to the Senate. And that's basically another education savings account. And you'll hear more about that as we go on. But I think it's important that the district have, has a wide perspective of how to look at legislation and how to respond to it and how to build an advocacy network. That's my comments. Jeff, Jean, anything you'd add?
No, I just look forward to it to see if we can actually get some involvement from the members of the committee, of the, um, community portion of this board advocacy and not if we did, even more about, and things that happen in Jefferson City, but they're directly affect us right here in Melville and Oakville. And, you know, too many times, it can be overwhelming to people. So, we're going to try to sift through the rubble and help with only the things that we think would affect our school district and try to affect that in some way. And then if we can spread the love and, you know, help other districts along the way, that would be wonderful, okay? So, that's the intention.
Sounds good.
And we also want to make sure we have good relationships with our state representatives. So, that way, we've got a good rapport with them, so we can address issues and concerns we have with them, because obviously, there are decisions that are being made. We want to make sure we've got input in it and they understand our positions on a lot of this stuff.
Sounds good. Relationships are important. Any other committees?
We had Finance. We went over the amended budget for '21. We also went over the geo bond underwriting and also did a review of the insurance fund.
Okay.
And a lot of that's going to be discussed, or at least some of it's going to be discussed later tonight.
Great. Anyone else? Okay. Thank you. Action items by consent. If nobody has any they want to pull out, could I get a motion to pass action items by consent?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. My favorite part of the evening, student achievement. Mr. Dewali.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing us to be here again this evening to share some information about one of our, another, another one of our great choice programs that we offer in the district, Melville at Home. I'm with Ms. Kristi Matthews, who has been doing a phenomenal job with this program and really driving the success of it. She's going to share a lot of information about that today. I think it's important to know that Melville at Home, although it was a response to a crisis and to COVID, it was not reactionary. It was in the planning stages, conversation about how we can continue to expand opportunities for students and families in our district.
The current reality is that we have teachers who come from us all across the district. Our students do, our staff do. Everybody is working in coordination. I am kind of the middleman for all of the different schools. And we've been having weekly touchpoints at each of the three levels, elementary, middle school, and high school, just to make sure that we're keeping in touch and on top of the different issues. In CIS, we have separate file sets, just to be able to maintain all of the information. And with all of this, we've learned just a variety of ways to be able to communicate information and serve our students and our families' needs in the best way possible.
So, we, uh, we learned quite a bit for a semester. In, in terms of the future planning, there's a lot of considerations on not only what we can do, what opportunities we can leverage, and then not really limiting ourselves, but what is actually actionable. So, all of these are considerations that we've, we thought about, what could Melville at Home look like in the future? What is our opportunity? What is our market opportunity? What is the needs of our communities? What can we really scale? And what can we offer something that's a little bit different than opportunities that are already out there on a, on a scale? You know, we have all these questions, and I would be remiss to not add that without the great work of our administrators and counselors and teachers, we couldn't even have these conversations about what Melville at Home could be. Without those people, this is a mute point. But we have some extraordinary opportunities that are available to us in terms of successes we've seen through our synchronous learning and through our asynchronous, and how we can blend those and meld those and leverage those pieces to have some great continued choice programs for our district.
So, in moving forward, we're looking at what can we do to be able to grow our program and to make it even better? Families have been pleased with what we've been doing, but we want to be able to make it even better and to be able to get to where we have envisioned. Right now, we're researching some experiential learning opportunities at the K through five. One of our teachers has a student teacher, and so she's spending a lot of time looking at how we can align those different opportunities to our curriculum, be able to create opportunities, once it's safe to do so, for our students and their families to be able to get together with their classmates and be able to enjoy and learn out in the real world. We, to be able to gather information, we put out two different surveys. Each of them serves a different purpose. The first one was a thought exchange, and the purpose there was to look at our plus deltas. What are we doing well as far as the community is concerned? What is it that we can improve on? What would they like to see different? And then the second survey, Survey Monkey, was to be able to gauge interests so that we could identify, are we moving forward with our program and at what level and what degree? The only people that we surveyed for each of these were those who were in our second semester program. The reason for that was the people who are in the second semester either chose to remain or chose to join. So, we wanted to make sure that we were getting information from the people who were most interested in that program. When we look at the thought exchange results, we had a great number of people participating. Really high level, so we were able to send out 1,509 unique emails. And what we learned from these different conversations in the thought exchange, based on the different ratings, is that people really appreciated our teachers above and beyond. They appreciated everything that they were doing. They valued the consistency of the schedule, and they valued also the flexibility that the teachers had in this different environment. Our Survey Monkey responses were considerable. This is the majority of our population. Sixteen hundred and forty-two responses is nearly a 95% response rate. That is significant in any kind of a survey. It's super impressive. And what it told us was that most of the people anticipate moving back to in-person. We can't be particularly surprised by that. However, you'll notice that 20% of our population wish to remain in the program. They're enjoying it. So, John and I, we broke these down by grade level. We wanted to see for the rising grades, these are for the '21-'22 school year, where are people coming from and in what grade will they be attending? Obviously, we don't have students in the ACC program, so that kindergarten number is because families who are already a part of the program would have younger children or younger siblings who are interested in participating as well. And then we broke it down also by building level, because it's important for us to be able to identify which buildings these children will be coming from. You'll notice also that there's a Melville at Home number. Some of the families chose Melville at Home as their building for next year. And so, those 37 responses, they would normally fit under one of the other buildings. In looking at these results, we identified that based on those numbers, it really closely matches the size of Mosaic. So, for the purposes of determining allocated staff, we looked at the Mosaic model. How many teachers do they have? What sort of services are they able to provide and so on? The list that I have under Support Melville at Home, notice that that is not comprehensive. For instance, we have a significant number of English language learners in our program. We would need EL support. And we also don't have reading intervention, I'm sorry, I'm reading specialists listed. And we're using those services as well. So, right now, we, we borrow those services from each of the teachers' sites, and that's how we're able to provide the services for our students. For middle school, what we're looking at is based on numbers again. I was able to work with Mr. Kern at the middle school level, he's at Berkeley, and Dr. Morris, who is at Beerbaum. And both of them were able to help me kind of figure out what the numbers really look like. What kinds of sections are we talking about when we're looking for the staffing needs? So, Mr. Kern helped me identify that for math in particular, we have advanced math that we're considering right alongside of regular math. And then English, ELA rather, is two periods long. So, then that doubles the number of staff we would need for that. And of course, again, with math, we want to be able to provide all those different opportunities for the different levels of math at, at the middle school. And then looking at specials and encore is where Mr. Kern and Dr. Morris were really helpful, because we had to look at not only how does the schedule sync up for a number of periods, but then also, what does a, a full-time employee normally have for the number of sections? We were able to identify that there is enough for a full-time person for each of the specials areas, as long as we blend them, K through eight. And then we'll still even have a couple of sections left over that we'll have to borrow from other places. You'll notice, though, I don't have in there anything outside of art, music, and PE and library. We didn't really, what we're working on and we're trying to identify is what other specials would be, would be really a good fit for a virtual environment. And so, those are conversations we know we need to have. Right now, we're using lunch, and our families would prefer that we're using our Melville staff. So, it is something that we're investigating and looking for identifying which other staff we could pull in.
So, i- in terms of high school, you can, you can see that this is broken out separate than our, our K. We're really envisioning Melville at Home in the future being a K8 model next year, really leaning on the instructional staff of our, of our K8 staff. At the high school, we're envisioning Melville at Home to be embedded within the high school. It'd become part of the master schedule for the buildings. They will be able to handle the, the staffing of it, they'll be able to handle the course selection. We know that we can encompass every course that's available at the high school. So, we'll still have a level of asynchronous instruction from either vendors or covered in-house by our own people. We know that that will be a variable there, but we, we also know we, we simply can't cover with staffing all of the opportunities that are available at our house. And what did you see that this, you know, we, we had these concepts at the very beginning of the presentation, but we wanted to look through it through various lenses and longitudinally. Wanted to have a sequence and a plan and a process of where we could be. That where we end up is likely not on that paper, but we're also envisioning of what could be. So, as we're taking deliberate steps to get there and scaling up and making sure resources are available to support this. And again, we, this is broken down just a little bit clearer, so, from the previous timeline. But again, it, it is about the process, and it is about consistently revising as we move forward through that process. But we also know that there's a lot of things that we need to do now. So, as we plan for next year, having conversations about budgets, handbooks, student expectations, staff expectations, registrations, updating our websites and our communication plan. So, there's a lot of work going on right now that, that we can plan for the beginning of next school year. And if you have any questions, we'd be happy to, for our best answer to this.
Go for it.
I have a, I have a couple of questions. Um, can you explain to me how attendance works for these students? Like, I'm familiar with the typical building, obviously, teachers are taking attendance, that's reported. If a child leaves, there's a sign-out procedure. How does that work virtually for our students?
We knew that we needed a tracking method, and so we have spreadsheets where all of the teachers have all of their students' names, and it does have some data validation and conditional formatting, so that it's able to track as they add up the number of absences. It keeps track just in one of the columns, so that we know when we need to reach out at the administrative level. Teachers are making regular contacts for those absences. And then, it is something that we want to look at in our handbook for next year, having something that's got a little bit more teeth in it, looking at the student's success. So, maybe basing it on their level of success in this semester, whether they would be able to join us next semester, because we do recognize that there are some significant struggles that teachers are experiencing with students coming on or remaining on.
Okay, yeah, that's what I was kind of getting at. Like, I figured there was a system for attendance, but do they log on for an hour? And then they're checked here, and then they don't see them again after specials or after, you know, like, how, how does that get managed? Is, that's what I was kind of wondering, but it sounds like...
And that is something that, you're, you're exactly right. It is happening often, often enough that it is a concern.
Right.
So, whether it is the teacher reaching out, sometimes we're having these parent meetings where, you know, we're, we're meeting with them online, making phone calls, reaching out to the building level administrator. If anything escalates beyond really that, then we're also making DFS reports.
Sure.
And turning those in. But in most of the cases, like you illustrated, we have students who are coming on and then they're leaving for a little bit, or maybe they, you know, go to lunch and don't come back.
Yeah. And you touched on this a little bit, but just for clarification. So, there's a, there is a tie-in for these students with a homeschool. So, if an administrator or counselor, for a variety of different reasons, needs to be involved, that their homeschool is where that teacher ties in with for that family? Is that how it works?
It's actually the student's building. So, the administrator is, and the counselor are the ones that would already know the student. Potentially, they would have a relationship with that family already. And so, they are the ones who are our support system.
Okay, great. And then I have one other question that you touched on a little bit when we were talking about, like, the EL support. And right now, that you guys are borrowing, I think is kind of the word that was used from the different schools, but that there was, you know, a projection for possible future need. What would that be based on? How does that look moving forward so that we don't have teachers kind of having to do two different things?
What we're going to be doing for identifying the students who are going to join us is using an e-form. So, that'll go through CIS. And in CIS, we have identified students who have a, a learning plan through the EL program and through, like, a reading, maybe that they would need reading specialist intervention. We'll be able to identify that then and capture that information because we're using CIS.
Got it.
That's really a significant piece. And then beyond that, once we have that information, then we'll be able to identify what other staff are we going to need to be able to provide the most support possible and at the same levels that they're receiving at the buildings.
Is there a reason behind that, why that didn't occur for this year? Was it a staffing issue or, you know, like, having to hire more and not having availability or?
So, I... You want to speak to that?
A lot of it came down to timing. When we originally were discussing Melville at Home, we were discussing essentially the enrollment that we're talking about tonight, roughly, you know, 200 kids or so at a...
Sure.
And the, when the enrollment, we were forced to juggle resources as fast as we could.
Okay, okay.
And then at that time, we were using what the buildings had available. So, they were sending us their children, and we were still able, we still had the same number of kids.
Yeah.
It's just a reallocation of resources, and some of it got stretched a little bit then because people weren't all in the left room.
Right, right.
It was the best way.
Sure, right. There, it wasn't necessarily a perfect solution, but a solution to what we were facing at the time. But moving forward, you guys kind of are continuing to look at that.
Yes.
Okay, awesome. Thank you guys very much. I really appreciate it.
Um, I was, I'm, I realize this idea was born from the pandemic and arose because of that. I'm just so pleased that 300, roughly 350 families have chosen to make it, you know, their desired way for their students to learn. My question is, have we established assessments yet or ways to know how they're doing in relationship to the in-person learners? How are they, how are they matching up?
I'm glad that you asked. So, the assessments are the same. Whether we're in-person or whether we're virtual, we're using the same systems. And so that's helpful because it provides data that can be matched up. We also have a program in the district called Five Lab, which I was recently introduced to, and it gave us some really good information when I pulled reports based on the students' progress. Our students are continually at all the three of the levels. They are achieving at an 80% or higher success rate, really between 80 and 85. It's not exactly where we'd like things to be, and we're hoping that as we refine our systems, it gets much higher. But they are being evaluated and assessed in similar, if not the same ways, that our in-person students are.
Interesting. I was, you know, I was hopeful that, you know, with the, with it being more of a one-on-one type thing. Well, I realize it's not, I realize this whole question, but sort of individualized and, you know, where you can really zoom in on each student's activities almost immediately, that there might be some difference in performance, so.
So, our students have the benefit of being with their teachers every day, but they are in a really different learning environment because they have other sorts of distractions around them at home than they would in the classroom environment.
Really, and that's really one of the reasons that I asked that question, you know, is it going to be fruitful in the end?
Well, and our teachers still have the same number of students in their classrooms that they would if they were in-person. And that's, that is, as someone who taught online last year, it is a challenge to juggle and to be able to meet the needs of all of the children. And while it, I can understand while it would feel like they have that one-on-one opportunity, it's not always. There just isn't, there aren't enough hours in the day. So we do a lot of small groups to be able to meet and to be able to provide those services. And the teachers are doing a really excellent job of grouping the students.
I have no doubt, I have no doubt that they are.
Yeah, we're real proud of our staff, they're doing amazing work.
Well, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
If I could follow up on a question that Gina started asking. You almost took my entire question with the data point. No, that's good. So from a DESI aspect, Melville at Home, it sounds like is not going to be a separate school, that students are still going to be associated with their homeschools?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, so from a map testing aspect, are we going to be able to segregate those so that we can see how the two different groups are doing and be able to address actually either direction?
Sure, we'll be able to look at the data standalone, but we'll also be able to move that and send that back to their schools.
Okay. That's something that'll have to be done once we get the data from DESI here, is that... I assume that's what it'll be if it's coming from homeschools or from their homeschools, right? Okay. So Brian, you'll be my data person.
I have one other question. With the synchronous teaching and the hours, I saw something, it says 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM. Can they, can students choose when they?
So, that was part of our conversations on what are the possibilities that are out there? What are guardrails or what are some artificial barriers that we're setting up on ourselves? So that was what Melville at Home could be in the future. We don't know if that's what it'll look like, but that is speculation.
Very good, thank you.
So, on a case-by-case basis, I think I've heard of students doing some classes at Melville at Home and then coming in for certain classes, especially at the high school level that aren't offered. So if moving forward with Melville at Home, do you think that that will continue? Like, because I know a lot of the more advanced courses sometimes aren't offered. So do you think that will, like, be a thing as, like, it becomes more individualized learning?
I would imagine that the options at the high school continue to expand.
That's pretty cool.
I wanted to ask, so with the surveys, were the surveys just from, like, students? Or were they also, like, from parents, like, who are also, like, keeping track of their students from Melville at Home?
They went to the families, so the respondents were from...
All right.
Great, anyone else? Thank you, both of you.
Thank you again.
All right, next up is considering budget amendment. Is that a red tie?
It's a red tie, or at least mostly a red tie.
It's just due to lack of imagination. I just put on my accounting uniform, so no hidden meaning.
It's like if Greenspan was carrying a briefcase or not. That's the kind of interest we have.
All right, so, okay, we're going to look at the amended budget tonight. And basically, you've been through these forms before. I'm just going to click to the third page. Bottom line is, we're showing an operating net loss now of $600,000. Just to refresh, just go back to the beginning of the year. We started the year off with an adopted budget to start the fiscal year off. $4.5 million operating loss. In November, we made an amendment, and it improved to $2.4 million operating loss. And now we're at $600,000 operating loss. So we're gaining ground. This most recent amendment is largely affected by improving sales tax and slightly improving local tax. So that's really where we're at for right now. But I think the important thing not to lose sight of is, with the $600,000 operating loss that we're showing, is to understand that without, this is not a normal year, and if we didn't have CARES funding, that operating loss would really be about $2.1 million because we've had about $1.5 million of CARES money that's not really tied to incremental expenses. Some of the CARES money we got was as a direct result of buying, you know, PPE and Lexiglass and things like that. Other parts really didn't increase our expenses. It was just sort of free and clear money. So when you look at that, it's important to know that in a normal year, without that CARES money, our loss would be $2.1 million. But it's also important to know that as we go forward and the economy normalizes, we should be getting some of those revenues back. So, the CARES money, to a large degree, is similar to how I've been looking at it, is it's really a supplement to the shortfall of revenue that we're having from our state funding and other sources like local tax collections. So for example, that $1.5 million CARES money that's sort of free and clear, it really offsets $1.4 million of lower local tax revenue that's based on lower collections. Back when we had the economic downturn in 2009, 2010, our tax collections were about 94.8% instead of the normal 97%. And that's, in today's terms, that's about a $1.7 million shortfall. So we're tracking slightly better than that. So that's why our shortfall right now is estimated to be $1.4 million. But it's in economic downturn, you just have lower collections on your tax bill. So I think that's important to keep in mind. And then on the non-operating side, we've got a $1.6 million adjustment, which is really just paying off the final cop at the end of this year instead of doing it in the next fiscal year. It's really just a timing issue. And what that accomplishes for us is it cleans up next year's books so that there's no revenue coming into the cop fund next year. So now, next year, there'll be no expense hitting the cop fund. This is a better matching of revenues and expenses, makes it cleaner for next year. You get to the same result either way, but by putting it in this fiscal year, it makes for a clean fiscal year '22. So, the only other footnote, I guess I would add to this, is we know that we're going to receive, we're told we're going to receive $4.1 million or be eligible for $4.1 million of SRT2 funds at some point, possibly later this spring, possibly when we would have access to that. And I think the target right now is to really put that towards learning loss mitigation and virtual studios and food service fund reimbursement. But we don't have the exact amounts and plan. It's just the conceptual target of that. So the bottom line is, when we do get that money, it's possible that we'll have some related budget adjustments near the end of this year that relate to using SRT2 funds. And that's really all I have for tonight.
Any questions?
No, I just want to throw a little encouragement out there. I know, you know, the last couple of years, we've been watching stores and businesses shutter and, you know, I just feel like, and this might be my imagination, but driving around our district, I've noticed a lot of growth, our new businesses and subdivisions and things that weren't there a year ago. So I'm hopeful that that does have an impact on our future revenue. You know, maybe not this year, but maybe next year, you know? So, I just think that's promising. I like to look at the positive.
Well, Jean, that's a good point because I did notice back in that recessionary time period, I think it was the very next year, it did bounce back to normal collection percentages. So that's a positive sign.
Good.
So Marshall, I just want to make a comment because I was on the finance committee as well. And I don't know if everyone realizes that this committee is made up of local businessmen and women that volunteer their time, and they do just a phenomenal job. I was listening to that meeting, and it was as if I was at work listening to a regular budgetary meeting at work. These people don't get paid. They're doing this because they care about our community and they care about public education. And I just want to publicly thank them because I was very impressed with their dedication and professionalism.
Lisa, I want to thank you very much for that. We really appreciate their contributions. And you're right, they don't get paid, it's voluntary. Of course, you guys don't get paid either, so it's a really great contribution.
Yeah, I mean, nobody even, people know who we are, nobody even knows who they are, you know? I mean, really.
And they drove 90% of that meeting with you.
Yeah, it was very impressive, as always.
Nobody knows who we are either, Lisa.
Oh, that's true.
I have a quick question. Probably Dr. Gaines might answer this. In our board questions, you discussed the CARES Act money going towards learning loss mitigation and then also virtual studios. So if you might elaborate just a tiny bit on what the plan would be for the virtual studios and the learning loss mitigation?
So, we met earlier this week with the high schools' principals to talk, and Paul Westbrook and Sadie Lewis to talk about the virtual studios, which is really a preparation for the next phase of Melville at Home. So that we have this learning management system of Canvas, and we can upload courses into that, including videos for those courses. So, we could have a level of asynchronous through Canvas. But also, our virtual teachers being able to come into those studios that are in the building. So we're looking at six in each high school to do that, one in each of the core subject areas, and then two more kind of random rooms. So we'll have those identified by the end of next week. And the challenge is sound as much as it is video. But video with projection, and how do we pick that up and those kinds of things? So those are probably going to be a little bit higher-end systems. And then for middle school, we're still not exactly sure what those are going to look like. And for elementary, we're probably going to be looking at something a little bit more mobile that can be used from classroom to classroom as we think about how to distribute this. And it really has a primary support for Melville at Home teachers and have that within the building. So that's really the virtual studio piece. The learning loss mitigation, and that's just, you know, a term we put with it. We could call it something else. We had our first meeting today of a group of elementary folks, a group of middle school folks, a group of high school folks, trying to put together a plan that we can implement over next year and the year after because we've got two years to kind of spend down the money. So from a budgetary standpoint, it's going to have no overall net impact on the budget, right? So revenues and expenses are going to be equal over the lifetime of these funds. So, we pretty much left the box wide open. We didn't put very many parameters around them. We asked them to just really think and come up with, not one way, not maybe two ways, but a multiple of ways that we can try to bring our kids up to where we might normally expect them to be after spending 11 months so far in a very different set of circumstances. So we've got, I don't know what, one teacher from every grade level. We got SSD teachers. We've got all the core subject areas at the middle school and high school. And they're going to drive that work, and they've got about five or six weeks to present their plans to us before we move forward.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Could I get a motion to approve the budget amendment as presented?
Still moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Thanks, Marshall. It's the Dr. Gaines Show.
All righty, here we go. So, some of this is a little bit of a reprise from the big conversation that we had in December around COVID. And you'll recall that all during the pandemic, we've gotten guidance from all of these agencies and outside sources. And that guidance has often been incongruent, most notably in the forms of quarantine and what those quarantine rules are. So, the CDC started with one thing, and then they changed to something else. And then as the vaccines have become a little bit more prevalent, that's been shifted a little bit more. Whereas, you know, earlier this fall, Missouri was kind of quick to just almost blow up the notion of any quarantining, especially in schools. Yet the county has stayed with that 14-day piece. However, county has more recently modified their guidance to include the vaccination piece, and it very closely mirrors what we see from the CDC. It was interesting, over the last couple of weeks, I've been on a number of calls with colleagues from all over the country, and they often ask, "What are your metrics?" And I tend to follow that with, "Well, what metric do you want me to tell you?" Because we're all seem to be tracking something different. So somebody might give me their 14-day average case rate, but somebody else might give me their 14-day sum case rate. The same as whether you do a seven-day average or a seven-day sum. So, when we're talking with districts around the country, we have to be a little bit clearer on what metrics we're all using so that we can make comparisons. So the metrics that we've kind of paid attention to for, you know, going back to August at least, have been the pieces that the St. Louis Education Task Force kind of were looking at early on. We've paid attention to those throughout since August, even going back a little bit before then. The work from Harvard Global Health Institute, we've monitored that. And the CDC just recently changed their school metrics for us. So if we start off with a St. Louis County Task Force, which is transmission rate, positivity rates, percent change in daily cases, as well as the cases per 100,000, and see what's happened since we've been tracking this since August, but more recently, so if we look kind of this month, most metrics have been moving in a favorable direction over. And we tend to look at, we look at this every Wednesday to determine which way those trends are moving. And then we also look at every two weeks. Well, every Wednesday, we look at not only the past seven days, but the past 14 days. And then at the end of every month, we look at the trend over that month. So that has been trending in the direction that we want. The Harvard Global Health piece is something that we've paid a lot of attention to, and it's based on community spread. And the community spread has now lowered to the yellow zone here, and in which case, that tells us that K-8 should be open and that 9 through 12 should be in a hybrid blended, some sort of staggered schedule according to the Harvard guidance. The CDC guidance that we got in August kind of looked at the case rate over 14 days positivity. that we got in August kind of looked at the case rate over 14 days positivity and then mitigation strategies. The February guidance changes that from a 14 to a seven-day rate, goes from five levels to four and kind of changes those metrics around quite a bit, actually. So if we look where we are today, our elementary case rate is in that low transmission or that blue category and elementary is in the blue relative to positivity rate. Middle school falls between the blue and the yellow, a little bit of mix. The community and the high school are more in those yellow zones, although middle school case rate is very close to getting into the blue zone and high school is trending that way. So if we look at what's been happening, again, we look at this every week and kind of go, okay, where is the community lay in those metrics and where is each level in those metrics? And since we've changed the, since the metrics changed, we've seen an improvement on the community side on the, as the case rates have dropped and then as positivity rates have dropped, we are looking a little bit better on those as well because high school positivity has just more recently dropped. So the data that we have been tracking, this goes back to April 6th. So this is a long time of what's been happening with our ZIP codes. So it's what's happening with the daily cases, what's been happening, taking that to a three, seven, and a 14-day average. See some spikes. The spikes are generally because there's some sort of data anomaly or a lack of reporting of data from our data source. But we are, we have certainly declined in recent weeks. Another way to look at that is through the 14-day sum. So every day, just taking a look at the sum of the previous 14 days. And we've seen a significant drop. You know, we had that big, big spike around Halloween and it just kept staying high, but we've seen continued decline here more recently. From a regional transmission rate, we've been below one for a couple of weeks now, but you can see it's been relatively stable. We got, a few weeks ago, we started getting access to a county transmission rate and the county transmission rate has been below one since about mid-January. So remember, transmission rates below one indicate that we're seeing a decline in the spread of the virus. So that's all been a positive. The daily change, or I'm sorry, the St. Louis County positivity rate seems to be leveling off here around that 6% range. We seem to be kind of landing in there after a nice decline of late. The percent change in daily cases has always been kind of erratic every day. You're looking at the past 14 days, comparing the first seven to the second set of seven. But we've been kind of in what they would consider to be the green zone, which is for quite a while hovering back and forth and that's a change of minus 10% or better. So we've been doing in that, good in that regard. Our seven-day average of new cases across our ZIP codes, again, we can see whenever you look at the multiple data lenses, you kind of see these same patterns and the same kinds of curves. But we're at, this goes back to August and we've, these are about as low as we've seen since August. So that's a, certainly a positive. And then if we look across the county and we look at other counties, this is what's happening with school age case rates in St. Louis County and some immediate surrounding counties. You can see that pretty much everybody has seen this decline of late. So that's all been positive. We can take that data that we get from the state at the school district level and we can see what's been happening at districts across the region since some of us started coming back into session. And you can, every, for every date, which for a while, about every week and then it kind of got to be five or six days there for a while. And now we've returned to more of a seven-day schedule on this report from the state. But you can see everybody, or there was a lot of red in October and into November as we were seeing cases increase across the region. We kind of had a little bit of a lull and we kind of had that post-holiday bump a little bit. And now you're kind of, we're seeing a little bit more continued decline. So if we look across the districts in the county, in December, we talked about, you know, kind of how many districts were in each model. So that's where we were and the yellow indicates where we were. So elementary, we were a little bit behind where most of the districts were. Middle school, we were right in there. And at high school, we were a little bit behind because we had had to shut down because of the workforce challenges that we faced. So this week, we find ourselves right again with the majority of districts when we look at elementary now that we've returned, that we're back in five days. Middle school, we're right there with the majority of districts in that four to five day piece. And high school, we're actually in kind of with the majority of districts who are in some level of hybrid. Now, those hybrids are a myriad of things because one of the things that, in, in talking to some colleagues, we agree that districts that are doing five days a week, but part of that day is in-person and part of that day is virtual, that that's just another version of hybrid. They're not fully in and their in-face instructional time isn't significantly higher than the districts that are in two days a week. So they're just physically present a few more days, you know, more days, but not more instructional time in a significant manner. So we're kind of right there with the majority of districts relative to high school. If we look at age band positivity rates, it looks like they're kind of jumping all over the place, but these are not big jumps percentage-wise, right? I mean, the lines are kind of big gaps, but the lines represent a two percentage point change. So positivity rates in the last week or so have been showing a decline in the age bands. We see a similar decline for case rates in those age bands. We're seeing more and more movement to lower numbers. If you look in a little bit more recent timeframe, you can see that downward trend, especially with the yellow line, which is high school. We also look at a bi-weekly report that comes from the county on youth cases. And these are youth cases in the ZIP codes. So we can see what's been happening in our ZIP codes there. We've seen decline over the last couple of weeks. And overall, since we've had access to this data, youth represent just under 15% of the cases in the ZIP codes from what we're seeing. If we look within our boundaries, this comes from the state, we can see that we've been declining again over the last couple of weeks. And elementary and middle school cases are below 10, or well, 10 or below cases in the, in the last week. And then high school is just sitting there at 11. If we look within the district, this is the dashboard that, from last week in terms of the number of positive cases on students and staff and how many were asked or told to stay off campus because of an exposure. If we look since we've been back at school and we, you know, back to September and what we've been tracking, the last few weeks, we've certainly seen fewer cases and fewer quarantines than where we had been earlier in the year. If we break that down by level, we can see that the cases in all three levels of schooling have shown a decline. When we look at building by building, we can see that some of our buildings have gone several, many weeks that we've been open without having a positive student case. Some buildings have had definitely more than others, which leads to variances in quarantines. You know, we say quarantines in quotes by buildings. It's not technically a quarantine where they, we're just, don't let them on campus because of their exposure. But it's sometimes just say quarantine and told to stay off campus. So if we look at these on the student side, in December, we had reported that there were about 2,400 when we did the report on December 17th. And it was about 48% of those were from off-campus. Now that we've gone more in-person instruction, we are seeing a higher percentage of that, those quarantines being from on-campus because we have more kids on campus, right? So when we have a case, more kids tend to get quarantined. If we look at positive cases, you know, and we look at what we showed in December, that 88% were from off-campus exposure. That's what contact tracing revealed. What we're at today is about 89% of those. So these percentages have stayed relatively steady since what we saw in December. And we continue to see a relative low number of on, a, a low number of positive cases that get traced to on-campus exposure. And when we compare that to the number of students that we've quarantined, it's a very low percentage. Even when we add in the ones that we can't contact, that we contact trace to unknown exposure, when we add those in, we're still at about 1%. If we turn that and we look to staff cases, we can look at that by building. Again, some buildings have been impact, impacted more than others. So that means that some buildings have been impacted more than others relative to the quarantines as well. So when we look at that, we look at what we reported in December, that, you know what, about 53% are from off-campus exposure, we're sitting at about the same percentage. Most of it is from on campus, off-campus exposure. If we go week by week and see, do we have more quarantines this week from off-campus or on-campus exposure? Two-thirds of the weeks, we are bigger on off-campus exposure than on-campus exposure. If we look at staff positive cases, again, we are very, very close to the numbers that we saw in December. About 88% in December is what we reported were cases from off-campus. Now it's about 90. And we still see relative low percentages of on-campus exposure, cases that we contact trace to on-campus exposure compared to the number of staff who have been quarantined. Even when we add in those unknowns again, we're still at about 2.5%. So we've been looking at all of those. One of the things that we talked about in December and one of the biggest challenges that we face was workforce sustainability and substitute teacher rate. And that is some really good news. This is since the holiday break. And you can see kind of some metrics there. We, we've had a couple of days where we were a little bit lower, but as a general rule, we've been above 80. And the last few days have been a good sign. So I'll talk a little bit later about kind of what we're seeing in all of that regard. We still have a lot of unknowns though, right? We don't know if we're going to have, continue to have more guidance changes. You know, we, we continue to push for guidance changes, especially from the county. Vaccination, when we prepared this, we didn't know at 3:15. You know, now we know that tier three is activated on March 15th. So the question remains, are we going to be able to be a vaccination site, right? Big, big question mark there. You know, the CDC does run a website that people, well, they've had it for a while, that people can use to find a location where they can get a flu shot. They've reconfigured that for the vaccinations. So CDC's got a website where you can type in your ZIP code and it tells you all the places around you that have vaccinations. Now, when you pull that up, a lot of them say out of stock, right? So there remains a supply problem. But, you know, we don't know how long we're going to have to continue to wear masks. We don't know how long we may have this continued quarantining. We do know that for those people who have been vaccinated once they're reached 14 days after the second shot, that there's no more quarantining until 90 days after the shot. And then we got to start quarantining again, which is the same for a positive case. So those are all pieces that we have to deal with and figure our way through. We do know that our goal is to get everybody back to five days a week, not wearing masks, not having to worry about social distancing and implement some of these operational changes from what we've learned. Part of that is Melville Home. The question, the big question is, when will that happen? When will we shed the mask? When will everybody be back at five days a week? When will we not have to worry about staying away from everybody? I'm not going to say when do we stop washing our hands because we should just probably wash our hands like all the time anyway, right? That's just good personal hygiene. But these are all the things that, you know, we would like to be at and in that position. So when we look at all that, what do we, what do we do, right? Because if we look at the Harvard Global stuff, it says K8 should be open. So we're pretty close to that. And that nine, 12 should be hybrid. That's where we are. CDC says K12 can be open, but you got to have that six, you really need that six feet of physical distancing to the greatest expense possible. Our internal data is telling us that, you know, the more cases, the more exposure, the more quarantines we have. Quarantines rarely result in positive cases though, but we all have seen that our quarantines have gone down, especially among our staff, as the community spread has declined. So if we, when we look at what the data overall indicates, right? We got regional transmission rate that's been below one for a couple of weeks. County transmission rate has been below one for quite a while. And it's really, really been stable since about Feb, you know, a couple of weeks ago. Positivity rate's been below 10 for a month. Case rates are now in that yellow zone. And as I mentioned, lower cases, lower transmission, fewer cases, fewer quarantine, making it easier to sustain the workforce. So our rentals are opening up March 1 at a limited capacity. And our plan is that we're sending out a message about now that high schools will be moving to four days a week on March 9. So they'll do a virtual Monday and then we will be at it with Tuesdays and Thursdays being A-days and Wednesdays and Fridays being D-days. That's all of the COVID stuff. And with that, I will try to respond to any questions you might have.
Can you explain the reasoning for four days rather than five days?
So when we talk with our return to school committee and when we talk to our administrators and we talk to other districts, what we find is that four days a week is the preferred model for a variety of reasons in different districts. Many of the, many districts have done it because of the way that they've structured their virtual component. For us, it's really been about our return to school committee advocating to use Mondays to ensure that they're connected with students in quarantine. For, at the middle school level, there was also a desire to keep some weekly staff development because we had eliminated our half-days for the remainder of the year so that we could so that we could recapture some instructional time. But our eighth graders, eighth grade teachers are working on implementing standard spaced grading. So they really felt like we needed that continued professional time, development time for that group. And then another thing that we heard from lots of districts, and we experience it some weeks, some weeks we don't, is that Mondays really help with contact tracing from the weekend. And if we're able to do that contact tracing, and those kids weren't in the building who may have been positive, and we can potentially reduce exposure and decrease the number of quarantines by not going to school on Mondays, by keeping Mondays virtual. But our plan is eventually we get to five days.
So with reference to you saying Mondays are used to make sure that kids that are quarantined are getting some special attention, instruction time. What is the procedure, especially at the high school level, I guess, for teachers? Are some teachers teaching virtually, synchronously, at the same time as they are teaching their classroom, and are some not? What's happening to kids throughout this whole process? I've heard a lot of complaints that kids have class on Tuesday and literally nothing to do on Wednesday. Class on Thursday, literally nothing to do on Friday. Are kids that are quarantining, aren't able to see in the classroom at all, be involved? And it's always just curious, how is that being handled? Is there a procedure for everybody that is being followed? Or is it just hit and miss? Some teachers do some things and some teachers do other things? Just curious.
I will, I will say that we have taken a position of not requiring teachers to teach both in-person and students connected virtually. Some teachers have done that on their own. They've done it in a myriad of ways. Some have been successful at doing that, some less so. So it is a very, varied mix of what's happening in that regard.
Okay, is there a way to address that? I mean, I, I see that as a problem to some degree if some kids are getting instruction when others aren't. To make it a little more uniform, I mean, I don't know if there's a way to work around the, to make it happen so that everybody's getting equal instruction and time?
We're open to ideas, but administratively, we were not going to require teachers to do both.
Right, and I get it.
Because from, from the districts that we, that were doing it, that tried that at the beginning of the year, it was wearing teachers out. So we did not want to put that additional stress on our staff. Some, many of them are doing that on their own.
And so how are they doing it? Just basically making sure they're in front of their computers?
It, it, it is wildly varied. Some is a teacher connected with a computer and, you know, kind of tilted towards the class in some cases. It's a student who is connecting with, or is running the connection so they can be part of the group. So it, it really, it, it varies. It's been the biggest challenge. Everybody, all the districts, this how to deal, continue to deliver instruction to students who are quarantined has been one of the biggest challenges during this whole process, and is partly why we have all advocated for changes in the quarantine pieces, right? So if you look across the state, most counties are not quarantining kids as long as they're wearing a mask.
Yeah, and I mean, that said, the people that have reached out to me were very, very, very complimentary of everything that's gone down so far, except for, you know, what happens when my kids quarantined and they don't have any instruction for those days. So I don't want this to be all negative. I was just curious, or I don't even intend for it to be negative, just rather, is there a solution in the future? Hopefully, the solution in the future is we end all this and we all go to school five days a week. But, so.
I think, I think some people anticipate, some families anticipated that the quarantining has a challenge and throughout the year because oft, a lot of times, it's not quarantined once, it's quarantined more than once. So to avoid that yo-yo of in-school, out-of-school is why a lot of people chose Melville at home.
And quarantining is a problem in every single solitary business in the United States. So it's going to have issues.
I'm going to kind of jump on your bandwagon here, though.
Go ahead.
Because we don't know exactly what's going to happen even in the next fall. There's variants that even the US has created its own variants that are spreading throughout the country that may or may not be taken care of by what we currently have for vaccines. They know that they can modify those, but that takes a little bit of time. Not the year, or less than a year that the original one took, but it still takes time. So we could come into fall with new variants that put us in the same exact situation. And I think it's pretty imperative that we come in with a backup plan that's better than what we currently have because of exactly what you just said. I think we've all heard from parents, and some are parents, who have seen this. Somehow, we've got to have a better situation than that because we could be right back in it again in August.
Well, I would think the recommendation of team teaching, if they want to do that, they have to have another teacher who agrees to do the same thing on the other day. They've got to have pairs, you know, they've got to pair up, and that's the only way we can do it is if they have a partner.
I'm not even sure I want to get into giving solutions so much as saying that it needs to. Somehow be that it's not Education Tuesday, nothing Wednesday, Education Thursday, nothing Friday.
Well, we have to offer solutions, and that's my suggestion. If they want to do that, they have to have a partner who agrees to do it on the other day. I don't think I follow you, I don't think I follow you. You want, I don't, I don't think I follow.
What you're saying about a partner on the other day. Because they're teaching, I mean, because they, like a teacher teaches their classroom every single day of the week. So they're not.
Well, Dr. Yang said that we're bringing our teachers out even both.
They weren't doing them at the same time.
We.
Okay.
I just, if they did like team teaching, you know, where one did it one, one did it the other day, they'd turn it off.
Okay, like the mosaic model kind of a thing?
Yes.
Okay, gotcha. That might be something that could work. Yeah, definitely an idea to think about. But I, I kind of agree with you. I think it's something that still needs to be looked at, and we need to try and come up with a better answer, whether that be what you proposed or something else that gets to the root of that problem. Because we could be, we may not be getting out of this in the fall.
I mean, you've kind of touched on even audio issues and broadcasting things. I mean, there's got to be some technology things that if invested in would create an opportunity to make it easier for teachers to use that without having to navigate a different, two different teaching plans to accommodate, right?
Some of the platforms that we're looking at will make doing both a little bit easier.
Okay.
Because you're really just going to do one.
Right.
And we're going to broadcast.
Right.
Right, we have, we're looking at the ability to do that. We also have Canvas, which is a little bit a way to do things in a more asynchronous manner, but to have all of that content there.
Okay.
So we, we, we have the framework of how that can work better for next year. If, depending on where we are.
Yeah, I'm not exactly positive, but I, I'm pretty sure a lot of universities use Canvas for exactly that. So if kids can't attend class, the professor is either doing it synchronous or asynchronous via Canvas. I think they also use a different platform, but that seems to work fine for the gazillion, because especially in large lectures, of course, they split, they might split. You're coming on Monday, you're coming on Tuesday, and the rest of you are watching me on video. So that's just from the little bit. I see my daughter doing it. I know that's what they're doing.
My son's doing that too. Like once every three weeks, he goes, but he's watching when he's not there.
Right, or he's supposed to be.
He is.
You're pushing dollars at work now.
Any other questions? Okay, next topic.
Right, Prop S. So had kind of two trains happening with Prop S. One that is the campaign side that we're kind of not involved with. Ours has been really around planning. And if we look at all of the projects that our facility steering committee had recommended and what we had lined out for Prop S, we've really kind of been breaking stuff up into things that need to be architect-driven versus just district-driven projects. And so for those architect-driven pieces, we've been meeting with the architects every couple of weeks over the last month or so, and just trying to begin to establish what a schedule could be. So we know that early on, we're going to have to do surveys and soil borings as a big first step. We've got a lot of work all over the district, and we've got to do these surveys, some a little bit more in-depth surveys than in other places. We've been looking at the projects in different buildings, and how can we put buildings together in bid packages? We're looking at about nine bid packages right now. But what we're hearing from architects and engineers and the work that they're doing with other contractors are that we, there are going to be concerns with delays in the permitting and approval processes from the county, from MSD, and from fire. Because some of these groups are working remotely, so that process is just taking longer. We're hearing up to four months in some cases to get stuff through. But even with that kind of planned out, that some of that is going to take a little bit longer, they believe that we should be able to wrap up projects by the start of the '24, '25 school year. So about three years of doing some work. So if we look at what next summer's going to look like, we're kind of looking in three lanes, if you will, of work. And it kind of continues of what work are we doing with Prop R? What work are we doing with Prop A? And then what will Prop S be funding kind of during that summer that's outside of the purview of what we're having architects do? So we've decided that we've got a couple of projects that we want to move forward with, just kind of regardless. So it's about a $1.2 million HVAC project at Forder, and that we need to go ahead and get moving on the OES parking lot because that's going to take a lot of survey work, a lot of engineering work, and permitting work will be significant there. So we're moving forward on those. And then also, assuming passage on April 6, then we would move forward really quickly and be ready to bid because we've already bid before. So field work on baseball and softball at both high schools. So not saying that that work would get completed in the summer, but we would bid that relatively quickly. Then for the following summer, we've kind of lined out a lot of roof work that will take place across the district, as well as work on the pool structure. And here's when we'll, more of those bid packages will start to come in to play with Prop S. And then the summer after that, we're leaving Prop R a little bit more open so we can move things around if we need to. But we move over to a little bit more HVAC work with Prop A and into Prop S because as we've timed those out, it's based on how much life we believe is left in those systems. So as I mentioned, not all the Prop S projects will go through the architects, and we are looking at the nine bid packages. As I said, we're putting multiple sites together, scheduling the, what makes sense. And we'll be starting some of the more complicated projects a little bit earlier in the timeline in terms of planning. So in terms of a single site, Beerbomb is the most complicated single-site project that we have. So we'll start probably right from the get-go planning on that. We also know that the transportation area here will be fairly complicated in plant master planning that and what that site is going to look like because wherever we plant that new bus garage, that becomes something that we have got to work around for a very, very long time. We also know that we, we don't really want to move the fuel tanks. So we're prob, those are going to be fixed, and we're going to have to look at that as we kind of move forward. From a timeline perspective, right? We've got Election Day, assuming passage will immediately turn loose on the surveys. Architects will move into more serious design work, and we'll bid those fields. We've got all that review process that we've got to go through. Some of that will be bidding in this calendar year, but we'll move into '22 and '23 with bids as well. We also heard today that they're seeing unbelievable lead times to get materials. So our architects have a similar bus garage project in another district, which is essentially going to be a metal stand-up building. And they had a pre-bid conference recently, and contractors were telling them six months on building supplies. So all, all of that could certainly impact our project completion timeline, but we believe that we'll have some smaller stuff done in this calendar year. But like I said, hopefully, we'll be able to wrap up in August of '24 if everything goes the way it should. We're also developing a public reporting mechanism on how the dollars are spent. So we're developing not only a framework of how we report that at board meetings, but a framework for our website where we'll be able to show revenues, bond sales, interest earnings from having those funds over as we spend them down, what expenses, vendors, amounts, short description, right? Because we're going to have permitting costs and architects and engineers and contractor costs, all of those things that we'll have there, and then, you know, report that balance because essentially, this is a fixed amount of money that we're going to spend down on these projects over these next few years. So from a, also a date perspective, absentee voting is now open. We know that March 10 is the last day to register to vote, and that April 6 is Election Day. Remembering that primarily, the focus of Prop S is the safety of front entrances around the district. That's the primary focus, as well as work, some work on restrooms, parking lots, HVAC, and roofing, things that we heard from the community that need to be fixed. With that, I'll try to answer any questions that you might have.
All right. I guess strategic plan update.
All right, we just keep going. All right. So our current strategic plan, which dates to 2015, is built around student preparation and the three prongs of student engagement, continuous improvement and innovation, as well as teacher support and being an effective and efficient system. And over time, we have laid all of that out on this big spreadsheet so that we can see what's happening in multiple dimensions and be able to see what's happening in any given year and kind of move that around. You know, you'll recall, over time, as we looked at smaller time elements of this, we would have a lot of things out in the future. this, we would have a lot of things out in the future that would have a question mark, such as getting elementary one-to-one and doing some of those things. And sometimes that got moved later, because we had a question mark. We didn't know if we could do it then. Some of the things we've been-- we were able to move a little bit earlier, but that's kind of been our piece that we used to plan and conceptualize all of that. As we went through the process of building and creating this new version of-- or new iteration of the strategic plan, we really went through a process of engagement of our staff members and our parents through lots of surveys and focus groups and meetings, to narrow that to themes. And then, we've been taking those themes and then pushing those out into goals and action steps. From a timeline perspective, this is all a while back, right, we had arrived at those themes in a year-- about a year ago. And then COVID happened, and it really delayed our planning towards goals and action steps, because our original plan was, we would have had this thing done by now. Right? So we've been delayed because we've had to focus, so you know what? We just keep recalculating and kind of figuring our way through that. But you know that from all of that engagement we did with our parents, the two big themes that we heard over and over again were safety and personalization. So that's what we've been building in around those-- also, those big ideas of student preparation, teacher support, and being an effective and efficient system. So from a framework, here's where we are as of today. So in terms of student preparation, we'll keep this idea of student engagement. And when we talk about student engagement, we're really looking at effective teaching strategies. We're looking at continuing that CCI work as we induct new teachers into the system, as well as creating pathways. Now, I want to talk a little bit-- explain the pathways a little bit more under personalization. So under personalization, we're really looking-- and the conversation has really been about, how do we leverage the strengths and interests of our students? How do we do the same for our employees as well? So this notion of developing learner profiles for not only student learners, but adult learners as well. So how do we develop those? Once we get them developed, how do we warehouse them to make sure that the profile developed for a first grader moves on to second grade, and moves on to third grade? And at what point does that-- excuse me-- get revisited and modified? So how do we develop them? How do we warehouse them? And then, what exactly is the methodologies through which we utilize them? So Sadie Lewis, this is her focus. This is the piece that she's working on relative to the plan. And we got this pathways piece. And this pathways piece, one of the questions that we asked during the engagement process was, if we were to create any sort of magnet or theme school, what kinds of things interest you? And there was a lot of curiosity around that. So we are working to develop a process by which a building could ask or apply to become or create a magnet school, or a theme school, or a school within a school. That it would be driven from the building level. And through that process, how do we select those that we want to bring forward? How do we go, you know what? This plan needs a little bit more work before we prove it. And then, how do we support those that as it moves forward? So things that are really driven from the building level. We have buildings that have expressed interest in becoming IB schools. We have buildings that have expressed creating a school within a school, or a program within a school. So how do we not force that on a building, but how do we create the conditions to allow a building to go down that path from being driven from the ground up? So that's a process that we're working on. From a teacher support side, we've got continued professional development, but we hope to be able to use the adult learner profiles to provide a more personalized professional development experience for our employees. We really also-- we think it's important to call out compensation as something that we really need to consider for teacher support, and to make sure that our salaries are competitive, as well as creating a sense of belonging for our teachers within the system. Being an effective and efficient system, really, our work's been grounded in the criteria for performance excellence and consistently improving our systems and processes, and using that work as a guide. And then, really throwing safety kind of in as a fourth big picture, and looking at safety, really what we've talked about is two veins, one being the actual physical space, and two being the physical element. So the physical space is essentially the facilities, and the human element we're looking at in terms of belonging and mental wellness. And what does that look like? So that's where we are as of today. We've got small groups working on these pieces. I would say that we're probably running about six months behind where we thought we would be. And here's kind of an early draft framework of kind of what we're looking at, of kind of how the plan will lay out in terms of desired results, timeline, resources, and finances needed, as well as who's responsible for that particular element. All of this also lays in to planning for a broader choice environment that we see coming from our legislature, we believe. So you heard in the last month, you heard about our early college program. This month, you've heard about Melville at Home. We have a variety of choice programs, especially for our high school students. But how do we continue to grow those? And really, that pathways component of our strategic plan is-- looks-- is the piece that helps expand that. And as we look at that, marketing, we believe, is going to become probably a little bit more important. So along with that, we've been-- we've been invited a few times, but we've gotten a little bit more push of late to be invited to apply to be a member of the League of Innovative Schools. It's about 114 districts across the country that do work in a variety of areas. When the group started, it was some of the leading districts in the country. Continues to be that way. As a colleague says, if you want to be world-class, you need to rub elbows with world-class. So these are some really high-quality districts. And the league is kind of an offshoot or subset of Digital Promise, which was formed back in 2008 by Congress. President Bush signed it into law, and then it really got moving in 2011. So our application for that will be due at the end of April, and then we'll know through the process. The other thing that we're doing through this, I say thing, it's like lots of different things that we do through all of this process, is to try to look ahead, that what are the challenges that we might face down the road? And one of those is this massive amount of HVAC work that is coming due between '26 and '31. Our estimates are about $30 million worth of work. If you look at our current budget, if we shifted all of our capital over to HVAC out in that timeframe, it wouldn't be enough to fund it. So knowing that that's a challenge out there in the future, how do we start planning for that now? And we have a responsibility to do that. So if you think back to several years ago, you know, we had this whole conversation around three cents, and what do we do with this three cents? Well, what we did was, we put it all in capital to start with, to make some investments there, and we slowly moved it over operations to ensure that, one, our operations side stayed in good shape, and, two, it would help us be able to continue to fund salary schedule. So we've been looking at kind of a similar type of plan, looking out into '26 and beyond. How can we start shifting and laying money out in places to be ready for this massive wall that we're going to face in 2026? Part of that, we've already laid out in all of this, and that is Prop A will come due. It will expire in the '25, '26 school year, I believe. And if we took that four cents and moved that over to a bond issue, that would be able to fund about $12 million in today's dollars of that. So that could be part of it. So how do we use that? How do we plan for that? So our strategic plan, we're not only looking at what we're going to do a year or two out. Some of that goes way out beyond that. But as I mentioned, this is really where we're framing at it right now. You know, when we did all of this work with community engagement, with our staff, with our parents, you know, asking a number of questions, safety, safety, safety was absolutely the number-one thing that we heard. And the number-two thing that we heard was, how do you help leverage the strengths and interests of my child? I think we can do that through this personalization work, continuing to create niche programs that provide opportunities for kids, whether at the elementary that's mosaic, or it becomes maybe an IB elementary, maybe a fifth-grade environmental science program, maybe something specific to fine arts at a grade level. You know, those possibilities are unlimited. We've got the academies concept at the middle school. We'll grow that up to eighth grade next year. What else is possible at the middle school? And at the high schools, we've got, you know, our personalized learning labs. We've got the CAPS program. We've got South Tech. We're going to graduate our first high schoolers this year, who will also leave with an associate's degree. My path, we've got all of these programs that are available to our kids, so that they can find their passion in life and go on and be successful. So with that, I'll try to answer any questions that you might have.
Anyone? Okay. I guess you did a great job. Thank you. Yes, that was a good update. Thank you, Dr. Gaines. Okay, now we are up to the open period for patron comments on non-agenda items. Terry Hildebrand, if you would like to come up and speak. A couple of things I have to run through here. Three minutes is allotted for time to speak. If you hear the buzzer or not finished, please try to finish up on that thought and conclude quickly. And discussion of individuals or specific situations isn't allowed. Board will strictly enforce these rules. Speakers will be interrupted if they discuss matters that might violate board rules and policy. Flori Shears, thank you.
Understood. Thank you for the opportunity to appear before you tonight. My name is Terry Hildebrand. I've been a resident of the Melville School District for 25 years. I'm appearing before you tonight because I'm extremely disappointed in the poor academic performance of the Melville School District. I appeared before you two years ago with the same concerns. Sadly, since that time, nothing has changed. On Monday, I emailed the board members and Superintendent Gaines a letter and data comparing Melville with 13 other school districts. In the meeting minutes, the abbreviated letter reads as follows. The American College Test, also known as ACT, is a test taken by high school seniors. It represents an average of English, math, reading, and science scores. ACT is an indicator of the quality of education a student receives in a school district. The last ACT scores were published in the summer of 2020. The tests were taken in the fall of 2019. This is before the pandemic. Melville's 2019 ACT score was 21.2. This is the second lowest in the last 12 years for Melville. When comparing scores of 13 other area districts, Melville tied for ninth place. It is notable that Melville only tested 83% of graduates. Many other districts tested, on average, 93% of graduates. This lower student participation at Melville falsely inflated Melville's ACT score. In July 2015, Dr. Gaines became Melville's superintendent. He inherited a favorable ACT score of 23. That same year, Melville taxpayers passed Proposition R, giving the district an additional $8.5 million in revenue. Four years later, and under the leadership of Superintendent Gaines, ACT scores have plummeted. More money, but lower scores. Let's talk money. In 2019, Melville and Lindberg each spent about $9,500 per student. The average teacher salary in Lindberg and Melville was nearly the same, at $58,800. However, Lindberg's ACT score was 23.1 compared to Melville's much lower score of 21.2. Lindberg is doing a much better job with the same resources. Your excuses for poor performance include demographics, students where English is not their first language, and money. Parents and taxpayers want solutions, not excuses. Every school district has challenges. It's up to you, the governing body, to address and fix the problems. You have failed to do that. It's past time to step up and make the changes necessary, provide a better education for the students of Melville, or step aside for someone else to get the job done. Interestingly, private schools have been in class K through 12 five days a week this year. Melville hasn't been able to do that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I'm just going to say one real quick thing. I want to thank Emily and Nano. You guys, every meeting you come to, speak up and participate, and I think it's absolutely awesome what our student reps are doing this year. So I just wanted to say that. Is it really? Their last-- it's their last meeting?
No. No, I don't think it's their last meeting.
Oh, good. Let us know when the last one is. We'll have cake.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, good. I don't want to lose you that quick. Tori, could you put us into closed, please?
Yes. Motion to enter a closed session meeting for the purpose of reading of minutes of previous meetings and corrections, and approval of the same and other items. Under the Missouri revised statute 610.021 subsections 1 through 21, and 610.022 subsections 1 through 6, hiring, firing, disciplining, or promoting particular employees, 610.0213, preparation for negotiations with employee groups, 610.0219, and individually identifiable personnel records, performance ratings, or records pertaining to employees or applications for employment, 610.02113. Larry?
Yes.
Gene?
Yes.
Peggy?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Tori?
Yes.
Okay, we are in closed session. We will take a 10-minute recess, which puts us at 8:25 to be back.